I have no doubts you'll put it together well. Did you get a response?
I'm ready when you're ready.
Okay. I will call to order the Monday, November 25th, 2019, meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is any public comments on items that are not on our agenda. Are there any? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3A, public hearing. And this is a continu- continuation, the record is still open on this one, so we don't need to reopen the record, it still is.
Yep.
Ms. Robertson Gardner.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. As you're aware, we are adopting concept planning zoning and code amendments for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. And every meeting, seems like, we come back to you with some topics. So we're trying to break up a lot, this large package into digestible topics. And the topics we have this evening are the road design, the transportation analysis, and speed zones. And so I will be presenting that in those three, three topics. And I think what I'd like as planning staff, as we get to discussions and direction at the end of the meeting, to kind of have those directions in those three different topics. So tonight, again, we have Beaver Creek Road Design, which is feedback from the recent city commission work session and the discussion of how wide Beaver Creek Road should be and should there be, what the intersection control should be, which is different than the second topic, which is the actual transportation analysis for the rezoning. And John Replinger with Replinger and Associates is here this evening and will help walk us through that. And I know you probably have some questions for him and he hopefully be in a place where he can answer them.
I just want to clarify before we start.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us how much input you got from the public on each of these? I'm, I know you put out some questionnaires and asked-
Oh, sure, when I, let me do that-
I'd be interested in knowing how much-
Sure, let me do that within each topic.
That's what I was gonna-
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's great. And the last one is speed zone within the concept plan, and that's the direction I received from Chair Mitchell, a little bit about speed limits in the concept plan. So I wanted to give an update on some recent senate bill that passed and what the options are for Oregon City moving forward. So Beaver Creek Road Design, this is the topic of the discussion about what the design for Beaver Creek Road should be and what should be the approach to intersection controls. You know, really, at the, the whole purpose of this concept plan zoning amendment was get a grant, go through some public engagement, take a 60-page narrative document, and work to turn it into clear and objective, implementated, implementable code. So as we reached out to the public in the spring of 2019, we heard a lot of comment related to the width of Beaver Creek Road and a little bit about intersection control. And so we went back to our consultant, DKS Associates, who was part of the grant package, and asked some questions related to the width of the design and what other options do we have? And, and does the existing three-lane segment that was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan and the transportation system plan, does that meet our transportation requirements? What other options do we have? And what are, what, what are the kind of pros and cons or, or trade-offs you would get with the different intersection approaches? And so that's the background I'm going to give now. We realized that this road design involved, definitely had fiscal impacts. So what we wanted, did not want to do as staff is run through a very linear process where this all went to the planning commission, then it all went to the city commission, and then there really was no feedback conversation. And so we wanted to reach out to the city commission early on to try to get their initial comments regarding the, this, this design question, to allow the planning commission, like we're doing tonight, if the planning commission has a different take on this approach or has different insight, then we can build that into the package of recommendations that go to the city commission, rather than waiting to the very end and realizing the planning commission, city commission may have a, a different opinion about the approach. Knowing that there is fiscal impact, there is more than just preference of design. I mean, the city commission, they, they are going to be balancing factors such as constructability, financing, funding, capital improvement projects, some of those larger questions. So we asked that to them in August, and they kind of gave feedback to staff that they needed more information. So we, we did some more homework in the fall.
Is it possible for you to turn those light down-
Sure, we can do that.
Right in the eyes.
Absolutely.
I thought my home, but that's coming back there too. That's better.
There we go. We can all get our eyes-
Right in the eyes.
All right, so-
Let me ask a quick question, too. So when we do, we talk about the government, the city involved with the transportation and the cost, so the developers don't pick up any of the costs of the-
Well, this would be, this would be the question, uh, it, and I can get to that when we get through the slides. But it's some of these questions about, yes, there's a point where a different approaches would potentially require a city being involved in some of the upsides and how it's constructed. So the city commission asked for us to do a little more homework. We reached out to the community in October and early November and had a survey that asked some different questions about Beaver Creek Road design and configuration, as well as intersection controls, and that, those results are attached, and I'll talk about it at a future slide. And we did some, just initial in-house look at sizing of roundabouts. I think sometimes until you actually place a roundabout, both a three and five-lane roundabout on land, the sizing is, goes from theoretical to actual. And so the roundabouts that we, the roundabout study that's attached really is just taking a federal highway roundabout template and placing it in the center line of, of the intersection. It was not specially designed at each intersection. If for some reason this community wanted to move forward with roundabouts, there would be a lot more engineering studies related to actually what the final design would be. This is just taking a template and putting it on the center line just for sizing. So we came back and, oh, so what we learned through that is roundabouts take up more lanes, land than inter- signalized intersection, and five-lane roundabouts definitely take up a lot more land than three-lane inters- uh, roundabouts. There was a fair amount of neighborhood impact because the west side of the Beaver Creek Road is where most of the development has occurred, and there may be quite a fair amount of exactions that would need to be made through condemnation of property in order to-
Or will occur, you're talking about-
Would occur if, would occur if, if roundabouts were pursued in the existing alignment of Beaver Creek Road. And the process to build, we were finding, because really only the east side of the road was really open for redevelopment, most of the west side of Beaver Creek had been developed, except for a small portion near Claremont and Loda Road, that either the whole center lane of Beaver Creek would have to be moved fully east to accommodate the full width of what a five-lane roundabout would be. Or they would have to go through kind of a capital improvement project and go through acquisition of the needed properties in order to put the roundabout in.
That one of Borland Road and Toollon is a good example of how much basic-
Yeah, and I think what we, the hard part is, the more urbanized an intersection is, the more acquisition potential will need to occur to put a roundabout in. So that's what we were learning, is there was actually a fair amount of existing development we'd have to work around. It wasn't insurmountable, but there were trade-offs. So to make sure we reached out to the public, because this, this conversation was new of the width of Beaver Creek Road and different intersection approaches, and, you know, the goal of this plan was to implement and adopt a concept. So when we're bringing in new concepts, we wanted to reach out to the public and touch base and kind of get the pulse of the community. These kind of type of survey results are not statistically significant. We're not asking the public to digest all this information and come up with a specific recommendation. It's really trying to get the pulse of the community and to see where they are at and how that can help provide us an extra data point to decision-makers. We heard a lot of comments, and if you can think of a comment, we've probably heard it from all different sides. And attached in your packet is the breakdown, but then also just, we provided all the raw data of all the comments. So these are just some selected comments, tried to find a balance of the comments I received. The breakdown, we are generally was, would you prefer using roundabouts or traffic signals along this section of Beaver Creek Road? We had 93 people recommending roundabouts and 79 recommending traffic signals. And those were kind of about the same percentage all the way through the surveys. I would kind of check in every couple of days. The next one was talking about lane widths, and would you prefer seeing a three-lane, five-lane, or a transition from five-lane to three-lane? And that kind of balance of, about half of the group, kind of all the way through, wanted a five-lane, and the other half was some balance of a three-lane or a transition to a three-lane. And that also was running pretty standard as a percentage through the open time period of the survey. This was just a general breakdown, we kind of asked trade-off questions, and everyone wanted everything, which is not unique. But it is an interesting piece to see what people were passionate about. And people want both to reduce vehicle congestion and they want pedestrian safety, and we heard that loud and clear. I think those are kind of two big takeaways to get from, from this non-statistically significant breakdown. The last thing that the city commission asked, and we actually asked as part of our DKS study this summer, was, there was a request to look at the Holly Lane connection projects. And I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about what that means, because I think it's a little vague, so people don't quite understand what Holly Lane connection means. There are a couple of projects in our transportation system plan, and you'll kind of see them below, D-37 and D-30, 83 and D-57 and D-58. And those all kind of together are the Holly Lane connection projects.
Is the yellow the Holly Lane?
Holly, no, that 213, well, hold on. 213 is in yellow. And what you see Holly Lane is, actually, do you see where D-37 is up at the top? To the left, that road is Holly Lane. So what it's saying is, in order to ensure that not every single user in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, or anybody coming to the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan utilizes that sole intersection at Maple Lane and Beaver Creek Road, we need to provide additional opportunities for road connections. Not saying that everyone is going to use those, but it is generally bad transportation policy to have a funneling of only one option down to an intersection. So in an effort to try to find parallel routes and to do trip distribution, which looks at providing different ways for people to reach their destination, so not everyone has to rely on one intersection. These connection projects were identified in the transportation system plan. It doesn't, our transportation system plan doesn't say when they're built, but there, there are projects that should be built in, in order to build out of the connectivity in our city. One of the questions that was asked is can we remove some or all of these? And we heard a pretty strong response back from the Oregon Department of Transportation.
What?
They indicated that these connectivity projects, these different ways to get people through our city, are, the projects identified in our alternate transportation agreement that we had a couple of years ago for new targets at 213 and Beaver Creek, we went through a big, a big public process, had a working group, and approved through planning commission, city commission, alternative target, mobility targets, or alternative targets at 213 and Beaver Creek. With an understanding that there would be some additional safety projects. One of them is the free-flow right turn at Beaver Creek Road going northbound at 213, right? So right now, people having to yield, so we're trying to get a free-flow right. But also all the other projects in our transportation system plan that provide connections throughout the city. So what we heard from ODOT was if these projects were removed from the transportation system plan, then the city would need to renegotiate our alternative mobility targets, because that was part of the package. And our city commission, we asked the city commission, was this something you would want to pursue? The staff could not, there was no redable project that we could think of that, without doing additional engineering work or additional analysis that would replace the existing project. So we weren't, it wasn't just like a, take this project and swap it. We would have to go through a full negotiation again and come up with something else that ODOT would agree on. So the city commission directed at this time not to move forward with any renegotiation and to keep the, these Holly Lane projects in the transportation system plan as adopted, knowing that, you know, this, the whole region is looking at the mobility standard. Some of these conversations will be up again in the next couple of years, and that may be a better time to have these larger conversations. But right now, city commission gave direction that they did not want to revisit the negotiation for the alternative mobility target.
Can I ask, now, so I can completely understand this. So the Oregon state said that if we changed anything, they would not-
So-
I mean, is this one of those old, those things like the county telling us you have to do this or not?
Well, right now, we don't meet our mobility targets. So our, we oversee our ratio of vehicles at the 213 interchange.
213 of Beaver Creek?
Yeah, because of existing background traffic, you know, we, everyone is using 213, right? And, and the standard cannot be met, which we realized as a community, we, we couldn't develop any further, not just Beaver Creek, but we had, we had to understand as a community what the alternate approach is to also meet the intent. And that was the alternative mobility program that went through public hearings a couple of years ago, where we looked at all of our projects, we looked at maybe safety projects that could help with congestion, but may not necessarily bring it, that the targets, the target down to the level that the rest of the region had. But we had a new target number. And so that number was approved by the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Oregon Highway Division. And that was all through this negotiation of these projects that we proposed. And so if we want to renegotiate, that would be a brand-new process. And-
Can I just say that one more time, just a little shorter? Which is, we adopted, we went through a big community process for years to adopt the transportation system plan. In that plan, more ways to get around is better. You're not all stuck at one pinch point. We had a north-south road. Holly Lane isn't, calling it Holly Lane is a little deceiving of a name, because it's, the road doesn't exist right now. It's not Holly Lane as you think of Holly Lane, it's just north-south connection, south of Holly Lane. And so we identified this roadway, adopted the TSP. And then when we adopted the TSP, we had too much congestion on Beaver Creek and 213. And as part of us addressing that, we still said, A, we have alternate routes that people can drive, so they don't have to hit the intersection if they don't need to. In general, our city has multiple ways to get around. And so what Christina is saying is, this secondary round of negotiations with this alternate mobility target, which is fancy way of saying, we had to figure out another way because it was too busy. So we identified projects to alleviate the congestion and changed how we measured mobility, busyness. That process took us years, and if we took this off, we would have to redo it. And if we redid it, it's hard to imagine an alternative project in which could meet, could provide transportation options for the city like this one can. We're running out of room, because there's, we're built out, right?
So Laura, my question was, the Oregon Department of Transportation, did they set the, the targets for us for like the Beaver Creek and 213, or is that set by the city?
It's, it's higher than ODOT, actually, it's the Oregon Transportation Commission.
Okay.
So we had to go change it with all these other jurisdictions to accept what we thought was a good option. So this option we chose is something that our community decided in the TSP, and then again with alternate mobility targets.
Where I was leading with that is, I think I've sat through other meetings with you, with commission meetings and others, where the, somebody, the transportation, I'm not sure who it is, but the state doesn't help us with 213? Is, is that right? That even though we have some problems, they're not willing to help with the finances for it? Am I stating that correctly?
Yeah, it's complicated. 213 is ODOT's right-of-way, they didn't allocate any funding towards fixing it. That came from all of us. And the Beaver Creek leg, we have one leg of Beaver Creek, the county has another leg of Beaver Creek. Nobody gave us money, no, there was no, nobody was helping us in this. So we had to find a way, and we found a way. And it was a struggle to get there, but we did. And so that's all Christina's saying, is this took a long time. It's hard to imagine what an alternative to this would be, but, yeah.
Is there no way to force Oregon's state's hand on this? Because we all know it's a through highway, bringing traffic from outside our city through that area. Is there no way for us to get Oregon, the state of Oregon, to help funding with any of these changes? Have you all tried that, I'm sure you have?
We have. I think a lot of the community members have as well. I understand the feeling that feels like you're kind of backed up against a wall there.
Yeah, they expect us, but they don't want to help us.
Ultimately, the city is the one who has the obligation to meet mobility targets, regardless of who owns that jurisdiction. And that's, I mean, that's, that's the real problem. The onus is ours.
Wow, sorry. Thanks for clarifying.
But they're helpful in working through this, so.
So, so one more clarification or simplification in my mind is, we have the alternate mobility at 213 in Beaver Creek, and that's agreed to. And at the time, we had another Holly Lane, a parallel route to get down to the end of the hill, parallel to 213. And I think I understand that the city commission, when asked the question, do we want to open up the alternate mobility at Beaver Creek and-
Holly.
213, is no, we want to stay with that, and we're going to keep Holly Lane on the long-range planning, longer-range planning, that that is an alternate way to get to the bottom of the hill. Okay, and so that, so that's-
A slow, dangerous one.
And the road is there, right?
Slow, dangerous one.
Taking away the road.
There is, but it's, it's the best, it's the best alternate we have at this time.
Yeah.
And who knows?
I also want to remind, there's a lot of people who also may just need to get to other places southeast of it, but south of Holly Lane, even to Thayer Road or the Maple Lane development area, and don't have to go through, in the long term, and don't have to go through that same intersection. So it's both kind of intra-connectivity and then farther out, inter-connectivity. So I'm going to move on.
Okay.
So we did some very, staff did some very general cost estimates, because we wanted to kind of explain to the city commission some of the externalities related to acquisition of land, as it relates to different configurations. So this came from the staff memo for the city commission work session, just looking at kind of linear length cost estimates, and then putting in potential acquisition of properties, as well as, you know, if it was a small, little slop easement or a little backyard, there'd be a little bit of amount of money, but if it was an actual full acquisition of a property, it would be the market value of the property. So trying to build that in. So that's generally, we're seen as kind of order of magnitude cost estimates of what a full build-out of all with all three of those configurations would be.
How much distance are we talking about here from, or Beaver Creek? I mean, 90 feet wide, but I'm talking about how far we're talking.
This is the whole, this is abutting the concept plan boundary. So from about Claremont to the edge of the golf course of the south.
A mile less?
About that, yeah.
I've, I've got a question.
Sure.
Adopted, three-lane is 90 feet wide, optimal, three-lane is 76. So we've adopted something that's wider than optimal?
Yeah, so this was a recommendation of our Development Services to take a look at what a traditional three-lane would be. And if you recall, the Holly, sorry, the Beaver Creek Road had a center medium, a very large center medium that was for stormwater.
Oh, okay.
And what we're learning from our engineering team members is that the configuration of the existing road, right, being a, the opposite. So it's instead of, it, um, it had, instead of it having peaked at the top and then you're running this way, it would be a, an invex or convex. And so the geometry to do that, knowing where the existing utilities are within the road and matching up to existing standards would be really, really hard. So they are recommending that whatever the final design of Beaver Creek Road is, be it a three-lane or five-lane, it will probably need to have the stormwater along the sides of the road in the planter strips. And actually, Myers Road Connection that the city's working on right now is a good example. They're kind of larger stormwater basins that are in the planter strip area. And you might see a version of that on Beaver Creek Road near Fur and like Nelson's Nautilus and what's existing on Beaver Creek Road, that was a past urban renewal project. And so that may be more alignment of how we'll be working on stormwater for the design section. Because the, so if you don't need the large stormwater kind of swale in the middle, you don't necessarily necessarily need 90 feet.
So if we don't need, if we put that off to the sides, does this 90 or 76 still allow for a center median of any sort?
Yeah, it would be a normal kind of 12-foot center medium. So what the adopted one has a much larger medium than, than 12 feet. So what they wanted to do just for cost-wise is say, 90 feet is actually really large for a three-lane segment, and actually too small for a five-lane segment. So what they said is, let's do the cost estimate, what a traditional three-lane and five-lane segment would be. And so that's where you see the optimal. So an optimal three-lane would be 76 feet wide, and an optimal five-lane would be the 100 feet wide.
So if we're talking that area, because that's been, again, one of my big things, is if, if we're going to have an industrial park, we're going to have homes, plus all the people coming in Beaver Creek. If we did a five-lane for a mile, you're saying it would cost around 34 million, but I wonder if that cost, in the long run, wouldn't be worth it? Instead of doing small and then figuring out like they did on Sunnyside, oh, we need to expand this in this area because of all the traffic. I mean, has there been some thought given to that kind of a concept that, let's not squeeze it, let's give it as much as it can?
So the, one of the big things that staff identified as part of this was either you look, and this was the questions we asked, is do you look at developing incrementally over time? Or do you look at more of a, and development pays? And so then you really only are getting the east side of the road? So it's going to be much harder to do a, a five-lane segment. Or do you look at a capital improvement project? So you kind of take money in and do it all together? And the direction we see, received, I'll, I have another slide on this, received from the city commission was, they wanted to look at funding opportunities for capital improvement projects. They weren't, decided either way, they wanted to learn more. So we're going to come back at a future meeting to talk about what that means. But they did recommend going to five-lanes to Meyer, oh, to, to Myers Road, which was the kind of large transportation intersection between the Myers Road extension, which let, goes to 213, the high school, and into the development. As you go farther south, there is definitely a drop-off of, of traffic. And that's the direction we received from the city commission. And that's the direction we received from the city commission at the November work session. So if the planning commission, through deliberations, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but through this deliberation process, wants to recommend an alternate approach, um, will want to provide findings, uh, for staff to, to, to forward that through to the city commission.
It would seem to me that we all, nobody wants to spend that kind of money. We don't have that kind of money right now. But that kind of money now is, is going to be a lot more money later if we do it incrementally, uh, just in little steps. And it's going to cost more and more over time. But, um, that's a good analysis, good study. Thank you.
So, um, so these were the questions we asked, um, to the city commission. This is their, their initial direction to us. How many lanes should Beaver Creek Road be within the corridor? Should be a transition from five lane to three lanes at Myers Road? So after Myers Road, it would go to three lanes. What type of intersection should Beaver Creek Road have within the concept plan corridor? Traffic signals? Should the city renegotiate with ODOT for the alter mobility standard to remove Holly Lane for the T S P? No. And should Beaver Creek Road along the concept plan corridor be constructed by developers incrementally as a development is built or pursued as a capital improvement project all at once? And they said the city should investigate if a city-led capital improvement project is feasible and we're going to be coming back to them at a future meeting to talk about funding opportunities. And they'll provide further direction at that time to us. So the, um, I kind of see those two parallel pieces for the concept plan, um, zoning and code amendments. The important part is trying to find what the, the final cross section is. So how it's built can be on a parallel path and the adopt, the adopted cross section's important because that needs to be re-adopted if it's different than the three lane. Because we'll need, if any development comes in, we need to, um, know what the final road design is to be able to determine if there's fee and lieu, even if it's a capital improvement project, we might be able to get fee and lieu based on an adopted street design.
And what's in the adopted plan is three lane with a ninety foot right of way?
Correct.
Okay. And a five lane would be, would be a hundred foot?
Probably, that's what we're recommending to staff.
Okay.
So my understanding, the developers don't need to pick up the cost of the whole, whole road, just the side that they're developing on? Is that what I gathered from what you said?
So you're required to always build half street plus ten. And right now it's a city policy to provide system development fee credits for anything above a local street.
So system development charges are different than system development credits?
So you'd be getting credits for building above a local street.
Above would mean if they expanded to two on that side?
Correct. So anything other than above a local street standard.
Do system development charges, um, I know that, are they put into transportation items too? Or are they just mainly for?
No, you pay system development fees based on different categories. So there'll be a parks.
This is a different category.
So there'll be a parks, S T C fee, a transportation, a pet and bike, uh, different utilities, sewer, water, storm. So when you build, you have system development fees in different categories and those stay in their categories and can only be spent for the category.
Thank you.
You have more in your?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is my initial kind of background on what we talked about related to the Beaver Creek Road design. Uh, next I'd like to have John Replinger with Replinger Associates, uh, walk, walk the planning commission through the transportation analysis. As you recall, this is a zone change, so there is transportation requirements for zone changes. And so that, uh, was done, called the transportation analysis was done by our consultant team in June. So there's a memo done by D K S and, uh, John is going to walk you through that.
And just to clarify, the setup here is the city had an outside consultant, D K S, do the study. That study is being reviewed by the city's other transportation consultant who reviews all development applications, who's John Replinger.
And quick question. So the county doesn't help us at all with this transportation because then once it gets to the city limits, we're responsible, the county, because that road does go further out, doesn't help us with any of this?
Well, they can provide comment as per land use.
But they can't provide funding?
That, that, that would be a intergovernmental agreement.
They do own some of the roadway within our city limits that we process land use applications on, but they're ultimately responsible for the roadway design.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, again, John Replinger. And, uh, you've seen me here a few times before on, uh, all kinds of development review activities, um, over the years. And, um, as you're aware, we do, we require the applicant, which in this case is the city, to prepare a traffic impact study, transportation analysis for plan amendment and zone change and for specific development activities, including individual buildings and subdivisions. So this is, you know, directly parallel to that that we require for, um, require of all developers. When we have a transportation analysis for zone changes and plan amendments, the applicant is required to address the long-term impacts to show compliance with the transportation planning rule, which is state, state law, uh, Oregon Administrative Rules, so Part sixty twelve, double oh six. So, um, anyway, the, so the focus is on long-range impacts. When we do a, uh, an analysis of a specific development plan, specifically when it, it is, um, an allowed use, the long-range analysis has already been done as part of the T S P. So in that case, the focus is on the short term, when the, when the subdivision is going to be built out, built out, when the building is going to be occupied. So again, that's a distinction that, uh, you'll see when we, depending upon the type of application that comes forward.
What do you consider long range?
Match, about twenty years.
Okay.
It matches the planning horizon year of the transportation system plan. So, um, as, uh, as Christina and, um, um, and Laura indicated, there was a, the applicant, which in this case the city hired D K S to perform the transportation analysis to show the impact of the, uh, of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. We had undertaken, back in two thousand eight, a different consultant prepared a study showing the impacts and addressed that. Um, we also paid some attention to it in terms of the development of the transportation system plan, but because of some differences and I would say an abundance of caution to make sure we were going through the process clearly and correctly, we had D K S, the city, I shouldn't be using the term we there, but the city, the applicant, had D K S do an analysis. And just as with any other application, I reviewed it from the city staff perspective to make sure that everything was done appropriately, uh, kind of a second look, um, uh, to address this. The focus of this analysis, and it's the same thing that we would do when a developer comes in for a zone change. You know, maybe it's an industrial, they're proposing to analyze, to put in a, uh, a retail establishment. The focus is on the difference between what's allowed and what is permitted under the proposed change. In this case, our focus of the, uh, D K S analysis was what was assumed in the transportation system plan when that was adopted in two thousand thirteen and what is proposed in terms of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan? The difference is about seven hundred and fifty more housing units than were anticipated and about four thousand additional jobs in the area. So those are the, those are the numbers. It'd be the same thing if we were looking at an industrial parcel of five acres that anticipated, you know, fifty employees and a retail establishment with a, um, an office building that had three hundred employees. We'd look at, be looking at the difference, exactly parallel in terms of our, our approach. The conclusion of the D K S analysis was that the transportation system plan and its projects specified in the adopted plan would provide adequate capacity to meet the mobility standards in the corridor and in the specific study area intersections. And they looked at the appropriate, uh, intersections along the Beaver Creek Road corridor and some of the adjoining and nearby, uh, intersections. So it, the numbers are big, seven hundred and fifty job, they're housing units and five, and four thousand jobs. But when putting all the, running it through all the calculations and accounting for the fact that it's a big area and a lot of this diverse, dispersed origins and destinations for trips, the analysis showed that each of the study area intersections could, uh, would meet the mobility standards specified in the T S P. Now also, they did assume that all the, the projects that were included in the, in the, likely to be funded list were in place. And again, the focus of this was on the planning horizon for the T S P. They did not do any short-term analysis to determine, for example, whether or not a particular intersection, you know, Beaver, would Beaver Creek and Loader be overloaded in its existing configuration? That was not done. When a developer comes in and seeks to put in a project that will impact that intersection or whatever intersection, they will have to analyze that and will be back before you with, uh, transportation analysis and my critique of that. So this, the Beaver Creek Concept Plan can be accommodated with the T S P projects. It's also worth noting that, that Christina just described, the, the, uh, discussion is underway about what the configuration of Beaver Creek Road would be, uh, consideration of five lanes rather than three. And, um, uh, D K S's assumption is what was in the adopted plan. So that is the, the far north end of it is five lanes, but coming further south, it's three lanes. They assume three lanes, but we can be assured that if you end up building five lanes through some of those key intersections, it will also meet mobility standards. So it's not a, uh, not a concern there. The D K S study was reviewed by ODOT as they do with all of the, uh, typical, uh, uh, zone change and comprehensive plan amendments that affect, uh, highways. And I, as the city's transportation consultant for development review purposes, also reviewed it just as I do when there's, uh, any other development application comes through. The, um, you know, the, anyway, the conclusion is there's all done adequately by, uh, D K S and the, uh, uh, there are no constraints in terms of, or any need for, uh, conditions of approval requiring the developer to do anything additional beyond what was listed in the, uh, in the, in the T S P. Again, when every, when any development comes in within the concept plan area, they will be required to do a transportation impact analysis, just like you're, you know, you see on a, on a monthly basis, has to conform with the guidelines for traffic impact analyses that, uh, are part of the city code. And, um, we'll be seeing those projects coming forward. We will be adopting conditions of approval for some of those. And, uh, those, each of those developments will be paying into the systems development charges and required, being required to implement various transportation projects as part of their conditions of approval for the development.
Um, I'm a little confused. So the T S P was prepared in two thousand thirteen?
Yes.
And they had enough foresight to plan out for this Beaver Creek Concept Plan, um, so that we don't need to change that? Uh, from what you said, we're planning on seven hundred and fifty, uh, homes and four thousand, a little over employees?
Right.
And was that already in that, when they were discussing the transportation system plan, that they knew that that was coming and what they expected?
Not, not specifically. They didn't anticipate quite that many, uh, when we, when we prepared the T S P, we didn't anticipate quite as much development as is now con, now contemplated in Beaver Creek Concept Plan area. I guess the analogy would, that I would, uh, would give you is, uh, in terms of postage and mailing a letter, you know? You, you've got, you've got the envelope and eight sheets of paper and you've got to put on two stamps. Well, the fact of the matter is you can probably put ten or eleven sheets of paper in there. So man, I think we were.
I see.
We were kind of fortunate and, and capacity comes in chunks. You know, you add a lane, you get a lot more capacity. You add a left turn lane at a traffic signal, you get a lot more capacity. So I think in, in, um, uh, part of the reason for going through the analysis was to make sure that we had adequate capacity. And had we identified something that needed to be changed, that would be a condition of approval and it's conceivable that we could have come, come back and said that we need to add a couple more projects to the T S P. It turns out, the analysis showed that we do not need to do that. I mean, part of that is that our two thousand eight study had give us, given us a good idea what to expect. We solidified it and included it in the plan. And once again, we've proven.
Before you forget it though, the second part of my question was, you said each development's going to have to come in and get approval for their section of the road? Did I gather that from you?
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't make that quite clear. The, the, um, a development that comes in will have to do a traffic study. And to a certain ex, to a certain extent, those people will be required to build some of the roads, whether it's a section of Loader or a section of, of, uh, Myers Road or Holly Lane. And those that are but Beaver Creek Road will have to do front of it.
And that's where my question came in was if it already, we know that it's, it can handle that under the T S P and under your studies, why would they have to go through and prove again that, uh, their analysis? I mean, if it's already shown that this is what it's going to be, do you think, expect that a development might change what you have planned?
We're probably not going to see very much change. And the focus of, of most of the development, uh, reviews and the traffic impact studies performed by developers is not on the big system, but rather on, um, whether the left turn lane needs to go in now or whether the, uh, what the appropriate configuration and the, uh, the specific, you know, uh, intersection configuration is going to have to be for right now. Is, can they get away with a traffic, with a stop sign? Can, can the implement, can the, uh, implementation of a, of traffic signals, that required now? Or, or will that be a few years down the road yet?
Good, thanks.
Anything else?
I have one quick one.
Sure.
Uh, speaking of capacity, um, signals versus roundabouts, either one of them have any appreciable benefit over the other?
That's a, um, there are no clear answers.
I wasn't sure.
There are, there are advantages and disadvantages of age.
Without being a safety corridor, I would think that would make a difference from what the residents said.
It can make a difference and, uh, part of the, the diff, the difficulty is in, you know, in terms of safety for home.
Walking across the streets.
There are lots of, yeah, there are concerns about, particularly about pedestrians, um, in terms of roundabouts and especially when you get to really big roundabouts and, um, there's, there's lot, there's lots. I don't think we've got the results in yet.
Any questions?
I'll follow up on your, your last statement towards the end there of pedestrian traffic. Uh, at Myers Road where the high school is at, I've, I've heard comments that there's going to be a lot of students or people crossing that intersection to get into the industrial area. Uh, and putting a roundabout at that spot seemed like it would be a hindrance to the foot traffic. Foot traffic does better at a standard signalized intersection.
Yeah.
I, I think there are a lot of, a lot of people who would agree with you on, on that. Some of the research indicates that, that motorists are quite. Um, some of the research indicates that, that motorists are quite good about yielding to pedestrians when they, the motorists are entering a roundabout.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not so good about yielding as they're exiting a roundabout. You know, so it, it's a, it's a conundrum.
And, and how far is the crosswalk for pedestrians after you exit at any one of the four legs? Is, is it a, a distance that the driver thinks, boy, I survived, I got through this roundabout. And about the time they start feeling comfortable, here's a crosswalk and they're short time, or they have a time to say, they may forget about it. They think, hey, we got it through.
Yeah, the crosswalks do tend to be located a fair distance from the circu, outside circulating roadway. So.
So it, it would be a, a painted crosswalk, it wouldn't?
Oh, there are lots of different.
There are versions of crosswalks that catch up, catch us all.
Could be, could be painted, there could be some raised crosswalks, there could be different, you know, different colors.
Wouldn't that show people running?
Yep. Yep. You know, and, and there have been some experiments with, with crossing beacons to alert people. I mean, it's, and then there are issues about compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, you know?
Sure.
How do you compensate, how do you account for, you know, blind or wheelchair, um, users at crosswalks? So it's.
And, and then bicyclists hit a new method. They don't cross on the crosswalks.
Bicycles have a choice.
They have a choice.
They have a choice. Bicyclists can remain in the circulating roadway just as they would with, uh, as a, as a motor vehicle driver. Or many bicyclists will end up choosing to use the pedestrian path and use the crosswalk at a different location. And a lot of it can depend upon whether it's a two lane or, you know, a single lane, single lane of roundabout or a two lane roundabout. Um, that's why, as Christina explained, uh, about the initial analysis on Beaver Creek Road was to set a standard template down over the road. But I think she identified that each one has to be custom designed, taking into consideration, you know, the property and the approach volumes and all kinds of issues.
Probably one last question on that. Do we have safety data on mixing automobiles and bicycles on a one ring roundabout or a two ring? Do, do the bicyclists win every time or do the cars win every time? Or, or what is, what is the crash or incident level?
I'm not familiar. I'm sure that there have been some, some research studies, but I'm not familiar with any of the results.
Two questions.
Yes.
You mentioned likely to be funded list.
Yes.
In the T S P. Is the Holly Lane extension on the likely to be funded list?
I think it is. Do you know?
I believe so. We can double check while we have public comment.
Okay. Um, second thing, and this is, I know you're an engineer and you're probably not going to like my question, but in terms of moving cars, if the two lane section that there is there now is a one and a five lane section is a ten, what's a three lane section?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding your question.
We have a two lane section now.
Yes.
If money was no concern, we would probably all want to see a full five lane section.
And he's radiate it one to ten.
With it, and that'd be, that'd be state of the art. That'd be a ten. If, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, does, is a three lane section just a little bit of an improvement over the two that we have or is it pretty darn close to a five in terms of how much traffic it'll handle? Or is it?
It's a tricky question. So it depends in part on how many turning movements there are. The place where a three lane section really shines and is a vast improvement over a two lane section is when you have left turning vehicles.
Okay.
So if you can take the left, I mean, we've all been on a two lane road where we're stuck behind somebody making the left turn. You get all this oncoming traffic and, you know, somebody behind us decides, well, I'm driving the ditch, you know, to get around.
Yeah. Or the bike lane.
Yeah. Um, or, you know, driving the bike, driving the bike lane or driving a parking lane or, you know, whatever. Uh, so if there are substantial number of left turn lanes, and, and one of the things you may, uh, may watch for next time you see one of the development review applications come forward is that we often have the applicant's engineer analyze where the left turn lane is needed. So depending upon the volume that's coming toward you and the volume that's behind you, you may justify the left turn lane. When you have enough intersections, you say, well, everybody needs a left turn lane at every intersection, so that's how we come up with the three lane section. Now, if nobody is making left turns because there are no access, we don't need a three lane section. We look at a two lane section or a four lane section. So, once again, it's a unique situation based upon the circumstances that we're trying to evaluate.
So between a three and a, a three lane and a five lane?
Yes.
Is it twice as many cars?
Probably in that number. Yes.
Okay.
But it goes back to my, uh, post office analogy, you know? You've got, you know, hey, if you've got eight sheets of paper, it's going to take two stamps. I mean, they don't need to put on three stamps. That doesn't get you any better service.
Good analogy.
Okay.
Question for.
It's nice that, you know, I have people who know what stamps are.
Some of us older folks do. Um, did I not hear in a city commission meeting that Frank or one of the other commissioners had been suggesting, even though I know that Holly Lane is on the mobility, did they not suggest that we kind of leave that out of the picture for the time being? Did I hear something?
I heard clear direction from the city commission that was not something they wanted to pursue.
That the Holly Lane.
There was a consensus for, for direction.
But it's, it's in our mobility as a possibility. Is that what I heard tonight?
Uh, the coal region is looking at mobility standards in a couple of years, so we can have that conversation again when the whole region wants to.
I thought I'd heard something about, but they're not looking at it. Okay, thanks.
But I don't, I can't tell you the date or time that that's going to happen.
That takes four stamps.
One, one thing real quick, I'd like to, um, in this conversation about the difference between the, uh, traffic numbers of the seven hundred and fifty homes and the four thousand and change, uh, so you recall in two thousand thirteen, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was in legal review. So it wasn't a, you know, so we were a little hesitant to put those numbers in to our transportation system plan. In two thousand sixteen, it was readopted and the five thousand jobs and the, um, one thousand something homes were added into the regional model. So by the time D K S was looking at the transportation analysis, they were, have already been added into the regional model. And we were in two thousand thirteen still thinking about them, um, in regards to the projects that were on the list, but those numbers weren't added into the two thousand thirteen transportation system plan. So we were thinking about it, but they weren't added in because the plan was in legal review.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Replinger?
Uh, one thing I wanted to touch base on. Um, we talk about capacity a lot, but one thing we're not talking about a lot is like the difference from a two lane to a three lane or from a four lane to a five lane is if you have like a four lane, the left lane is kind of the passing lane and then someone stops to make a left turn. I drive up two thirteen every day. There's a huge safety improvement by putting in that turning lane.
Mm-hmm.
Like some of the worst accidents I've seen were on two thirteen where people stopped to turn into a driveway and people are doing fifty-five, you know, and all of a sudden, that car is not supposed to be stopped and, you know, there's some brutal ones. Bernard's Road, I think Maxburg's got one. I haven't seen a bad accident really since they've done that. So, um, you know, uh, capacity is one thing, but also safety. I think a four lane is a really bad idea just because the left lane ends up, people have to stop in the left lane. That just sounds like a four lane.
And in fact, I think you've, you've probably seen, uh, and Portland has done a lot of conversion from four lane to three lane.
A lot happened, they got it too.
And.
It's better.
Yeah.
Because the left lane doesn't stop, which is a bad idea.
I don't, I don't think a four lane is under consideration.
Okay. But the, the three lane would have a significant safety improvement, even if that's all we can afford?
Yep.
Yeah, right. I agree with that a lot.
For John or Christina, I don't know which, I've heard that there will be no driveways or left turns other than the major intersections along Beaver Creek?
That's the concept. I mean, in, in terms of the, we have a hierarchy of roadways with the, um, you know, expressways and, uh, being, and with, um, with the two thirteen being an example of that, um, you know, between the, between two oh five and Beaver Creek Road, we've got the one, uh, traffic signal, but, you know, we really limit the number of access points. We do so also with, we try to do that protect the arterial roads. And when there's a, a choice, a corner lot, you know, you have access is onto the minor street as the general, general rule. It's the same thing that we were just talking about, those left turns into the site driveway that really reduce the capacity, they increase the friction, they, they, they slow things down and the, the stop and go sequence as people are then trying to sort themselves out, get the higher accident rate and you get less capacity. So.
Now, if you, if you take a right, then you, then you could use the roundabout so you can, you know, come back.
Yep.
Some other way to, or you have to go around the block.
Yes.
One other question I had, I mean, sorry.
That's okay.
If we're having an industrial park in there, can one presume that we're not going to have a lot of little entrances, that we're probably like a Tektronix is going to have one major one, that it would go off little side streets?
I think, I think we have, again, we would, we would try to focus the access onto the minor, onto the minor street, uh, the lower classification street. And yes, we, we work very diligently at keeping the access to a minimum. And, uh, we can be persuaded that a second access or an access onto a, uh, to higher classification roadway may prove to be on a system-wide basis, the preferable approach. But it's the, burden is on the applicant to prove that and satisfy us as to the viability of.
So an applicant would, um, it's the city, as you just said, but I mean, the development of those different properties out, I, I, that's, you know, what I'm asking is, is rather than a lot of little small ones, there'd be something in, going in where they.
There may. I, I want to bring two things in. We do have, um, minimum block sizes, so there are, you know, what you see on these Beaver Creek Road plans are the major streets, but there'll be minor streets within our block pattern.
On Beaver Creek?
I, inside the Beaver Creek Road development. So there's, there's smaller local roads that you're not seeing because it's just our block standard. So we would want access, I think, you know, a ride in, ride out, maybe on Beaver Creek Road, if, if it makes sense and they can make their case. Once again, that, that's not having left turns southbound. So I think it really is a case by case basis, is it, is it makes sense, does it help the system? And I think our preference is when we can to, to restrict access, but maybe in a certain specific, there might be a driveway where it makes sense to allow ride outs because it relieves, you know, a, a pressure point at, of, you know, another intersection within the, the area. So that's what a kind of the local transportation site plan and design looks at, which is what's the actual configuration of the parking lot in the, in the building and like, are there good site distances and if a ride in, ride out is allowed on Beaver Creek? Does it help the system? Does it, is it located in the right place if, if allowed, things like that?
The reasoning behind my question is, I know Dirk's about the roundabouts, but if you're having, if you're having a lot of employees, four thousand some come in there, it would make sense to have something where, that they go in one area and divide out from there and, because there are going to be a lot of people coming up two thirteen from someplace else. And then having a light there would mean that they'd have, you know, one, what's the word I'm looking for? Their light is for them to turn left to hold up the other traffic rather than trying to go in between.
Right. So there's multiple ways to get in and get out.
Dedicated light is the rule I was looking for.
So there'll be, you know, signals at the main intersections to get in and, and there'll be a local street network and block system in. And it, and if they can prove safety, maybe a ride in, ride out at potential driveways. But once again, that wouldn't allow a south bend, so, uh, left turn on Beaver Creek because it would be ride in, ride out.
Go ahead.
Um, I've got a question on the industrial park. It's kind of a clarification of what's, I don't need to know what's going to be going on in an industrial park, but is it a light industrial or campus? And, and my focus is what type of trucks, large trucks primarily, might be going into that, uh, site? And there I would think you would want your roundabout, if you're going to have a roundabout to access large.
For a major, for a major road like, uh, like Beaver Creek, uh, the assumption is going to be that you have to design for the, um, the, the big semi-trailer trucks to be able to navigate that. Uh, I mean, I think we can anticipate that, that, um, grocery stores have their materials, their, their supplies delivered by.
Delivery and pickups and stuff from.
Yeah. So it, roundabouts do need to be designed to accommodate the appropriate vehicle. Now, we, you know, we're lucky in terms of grocery stores because the deliveries can be done at offbeat times and it may be quite acceptable for them to, uh, occupy all the lanes in the roundabout or even to have their vehicles go over the, the mountable, um, median in the, in the center so that they can make it through. But if they're doing that at two o'clock in the morning or even seven o'clock in the morning, it may be quite acceptable. Um, designing really big roundabout, again, it's a, it, it's a unique situation that needs to be accounted for by the characteristics of the vehicles and the volumes and the like.
A, a three lane or a five lane roundabout, is, is there a big consideration for these trucks, the bigger trucks? Can the bigger trucks navigate the three lane as well as the five lane?
Yeah, yes.
No, they all flip.
They can be, they can be designed.
It's a doomed state of us.
Anything else from Mr. Replinger?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I have, are you, you have more presentations?
I have like three more slides.
Three more slides, okay.
Yeah.
Three more slides.
So speed zones within the concept plan, uh, there has been a new Senate bill, Senate Bill five five eight, which was adopted this summer. And, uh, basically it allows, uh, cities statewide to be able to do what Portland is, can do right now by state statute. So this Senate Bill five five eight allows cities and counties the authority to establish by ordinance designated speed for rights away under their jurisdiction, uh, rather than having to go through, um, of the state to have a, a, a design speed study. Uh, you can have a speed five miles lower than the statutory speed, so local streets can be twenty miles per hour instead of twenty-five. If they're located in a residential district, so that could be a local street or a collector and not an arterial street, uh, uh, and they provide appropriate signage for the designated speed. So that was, uh, signed in, uh, by the governor this summer and it goes into effect January first, twenty twenty. So if the planning commission wishes, oh, sorry, wishes to, uh, pursue a lower local street standard and read the residential areas of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, this could be a good test case. But I would, the recommendation would need to come from the planning commission to the city commission. If they concur, they can, um, probably write into it through ordinance that once a development happens, that each development goes in can have the, the twenty mile an hour, uh, speed zone, uh, if that's something that this community wanted. And one slide I thought was really interesting, kind of talking about pedestrian safety related to speeds. And really the difference in those five miles per hour actually does quite a lot and even, um, so you are much more likely to survive a pedestrian car accident if the car is going twenty miles per hour. Even getting up to thirty, you can see, uh, your ability to survive that accident dramatically decreases. And so having local streets at a lower mile per average, hour, does provide pedestrian benefits. If. And so having local streets at a lower mile per hour does provide pedestrian benefits if the community wants it. So one.
Local being inside, not Beaver Creek.
This is not Beaver Creek Road, this is local streets. And so this would be something that would be chosen by the planning commission, city commission, as a test case for the city. So this can happen citywide, but what I've heard from our city commission and they they want to make sure that this is something the community wants.
Twenty miles an hour happens to be the approximate speed inside a roundabout.
I think he's sensing a theme here.
I'm not kidding.
Yeah.
So question. It only allows, I'm I'm all for twenty miles an hour, I'll state that right up front. But the way the state law is written, it would only be in the residential zones of the concept plan area and couldn't apply to the whole concept plan area?
Only residential sections of the concept plan get this Senate bill ability. So when, if you want to do something outside the Senate bill, you have to do speed studies. What they're saying is.
You do a speed study when it hasn't been built.
It's a lot, a lot more complicated to do it, though, no, I'm gonna say the commercial main streets such as Glen Oak Main Street, that little neighborhood node, state statute allows that to be two hundred miles an hour today. So what really has been added is residential streets that are not arterial streets statewide now. If cities want to and it's under their jurisdiction, they can change the speed limit basically without having to do a speed study.
Okay.
It's an easier procedure.
So I want to clarify that too, so like Redland Road is forty, that's a like a.
That's not a, that's not a local street, that's an arterial.
I'm just saying, but I'm just for speed, Beaver Creek is right now forty, I think. Unless you get by the high school, I'm not sure.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, but if you get into where it's more residential, it probably slows down like downtown, I know some people do thirty, some do twenty.
And we're moving to twenty miles an hour in Kenema, correct?
That is a first test case, correct, and that is related to the McLaughlin-Kenema Trail, and that was supported by the residents of McLaughlin.
Where I was going with that, what what determines if something's an arterial?
Oh, it's in, it's a classification in our transportation system plan.
So like, what's Holcombe Boulevard?
That's an arterial.
Arterial, and arterials are not subject, they they,
in order to have a reduced speed, you have to do a speed study, and that's actually happening in Holcombe right now, and Dana Webb, our city engineer, is working on that.
She'll be going up, not down.
And there is discussion about, well, different opinion, there is a, there is a much different process. This is basically saying, we're going to take away the red tape involved in reducing residential streets from twenty-five to twenty. Just acknowledging that residential streets are not arterials, they're not, they're not providing anything more than local street traffic. Maybe even collector, but collector of a residential street is not that much higher.
There's the rub, what's the difference between a collector and an arterial?
Sure, and a collector is really, a residential collector street would have maybe a little bit bigger, I mean, more transportation trips onto it, but it's still at a residential standard, so it's just slightly more than a local street, but it's not, it's not an arterial, it's not a much bigger, you're just kind of collecting a couple of local streets together.
From off the residential.
But the level, but the the level is still so much smaller than you would have in a citywide arterial street where lots of different roads are coming in.
So who determines, like, I'm looking at Beaver Creek up there and and the speed that people come down to go to two thirteen versus, again, I brought Redland or Holcombe. What determines that those speeds, is the county?
No, that's by the state.
The state controls it, like Holly Lane right now is slower because of how curved it is.
So you would have to turn in a speed study and and make your.
And that speed study, there's where I'm going, is it based on somebody standing out there?
Yeah, you do an analysis of what the average speed is, so a good example is, you, just because you change the speed on your speed sign doesn't mean people are necessarily going to slow down if the the street is not designed for people to slow down. So usually, reducing speed is usually a combination of doing more urbanized street improvements, so sidewalks, sometimes parking, providing a, what, you know, not having so much, you know, built asphalt that you feel like you're in that runway where the wider the road feels, the faster you drive, the wider your lane widths are. So if you drive with a twelve or fourteen wide lane, which would be something that you're like on a highway or McLaughlin Boulevard, you're going to drive much faster than you're in a ten-foot wide lane. Just even the width of the lanes can affect your speed and how comfortable you are. So what they're saying is you need to prove that people are meeting that average speed, and so there's there's targets in a speed study. And if you don't, what are improvements you can make to the road to reduce that feeling that you can drive faster?
There's a reason I was asking, because I was thinking, would you be doing a survey with people along Beaver Creek out that way where it breaks off to residential? I know in Park Place on Holcombe, they did a survey, but hardly anybody responded to it, so how do you know what's?
Well, that's a, that's not the, that's not the speed survey, that was just a residence opinion survey.
Okay, so that's why I was asking if you were doing a survey for Beaver Creek.
Well, see, Beaver Creek is not part of Senate Bill five-five-eight, so this is just the internal residential streets.
Okay, with them, once they get off Beaver Creek, down into the side of it, okay.
So this would be a, if the planning commission and city commission wants to, the residential streets within the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan could basically at opening day be twenty miles an hour.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Citywide or would it be?
No, it would be within the concept plan.
Okay, but everything in the concept plan, sorry?
Residential streets within the.
Residential.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't call one, one thing and call.
No, we would probably say residential streets within the concept plan.
Industrial included in residential.
Industrial is out of.
It's not a residential street.
And what type of speed limit would we normally expect to have in in a?
I can take a look at what those are, I don't have, know them offhand.
Probably not forty.
Twenty-five to thirty.
Twenty-five, thirty, yeah. Okay, so it sounds like a, an easy way to get your speed down in the neighborhood instead of doing lots of studies, you just state Senate Bill five-fifty-eight allows me to do this, do it.
In some ways, it's a nice test case.
But is that what the neighborhood wants?
What?
I mean, we can say that, but is that what the residential wants?
If the city wants it, I think.
Well, this is a unique opportunity because there are no residents right now.
Right.
They're buying into the concept of a twenty mile an hour street when they move in.
They don't have a choice.
Okay, that's one of the times, guys, please.
Sorry.
Inside the concept plan area. So people are buying new homes and renting apartments or buying into the concept of twenty mile an hour street.
Right. Okay.
All right, so that is what I have, so I know we have lots of public comment tonight. And as we move to the end and we look for planning commission direction, if you have any, and additional questions for staff, I'm not everything I might be able to answer this evening, so I might have to, you know, come back to you at a future meeting. You know, I'd like the conversation to be helpful to me as we talk about it in these three categories. But I'm available for conversation during after a public comment.
Just wanted to see, thank you, this is pretty clear.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Brought lots of questions, but it was real.
Okay, I have two public comment cards, and I'm going to assume, Mr. Mobley, that your your comment is more along the lines of additional information for us. So, okay, so I'm going to call on you first because it's kind of part of the presentation.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioner.
I'll be some here.
Todd Mobley with Lancaster Engineering. We're at three-two-one Southwest Fourth Avenue, Suite four hundred in Tortland, nine-seven-two-zero-four. So I'm a traffic engineer with Lancaster Engineering, so I apologize for beating you guys up with two traffic engineers in one night. But all the questions and Christina's input too, really, and John's presentation kind of set the stage here for what I wanted to talk about, which is a real narrow piece of that. So we've been, we've been looking at the concept plan area, and basically I wanted to talk a little bit about the street system that's part of the the current proposal for the plan area. And it's mostly the collector street network, so on the first page of this memo, and I apologize, I don't have it on the screen, I took an excerpt out of the transportation system plan that shows that hierarchy of street classifications from freeway, expressway, major arterial, minor arterial, down to collectors and local streets. So streets like Beaver Creek is a major, major arterial, Myers is a minor arterial. And outside of Myers, all those streets in the plan area shown there would be collectors. So that just sort of sets it up here, but moving on to the planned density in the concept plan area, we've talked about that already this evening too, so I won't start from scratch, but there's industrial and employment uses at the north end, some small-scale commercial and mixed use kind of along the Beaver Creek corridor as you go south. And then on the southeast portion is planned for R-five, which is a single-family detached residential uses. So generally, as you go south through the plan area, some of those trip intensities from those land uses decrease. And that combined with most of the travel patterns being tuned from the north. Some of those streets at the, especially as you get to the southern end of the of the plan area, will have lower volumes the farther you go south. And what, what sort of exacerbates that is where the the planned intersection improvements on Beaver Creek. So we talked about not allowing left turns at minor intersections along Beaver Creek. Those left turns need to happen at at larger intersections that have either a roundabout or a traffic signal. And in the current plan, Glen Oak is the farthest south that would have that kind of intersection control. So everything south of Glen Oak would be limited to ride-in, ride-out movements. And that includes that farthest south collector that's shown that connects to Beaver Creek right at the edge of the of the plan area. That would be limited to right turns in and right turns out. If you're coming southbound on Beaver Creek Road, you wouldn't be able to make a left turn in there. So you'd have to make your left turn at Glen Oak and then come down through the internal streets.
I'm confused, if you're coming off two thirteen and you're coming on Beaver Creek, you can't turn left into the area?
If you're coming down Beaver Creek, like from the high school, say.
Coming from, no, coming from Beaver Creek off two thirteen, you're coming to go to work, you come up two thirteen, go on Beaver Creek, and I'm hearing right turn, right turn, and I keep thinking, these people are coming up.
We're looking at just adjacent to the plan area, so we're, we're south of two thirteen.
Yes, way down there, but I just kept hearing tonight, right turns, and I kept thinking, how does someone come off two thirteen to come in to go to work there if they can't turn left anywhere?
Well, they can, they could turn off of two thirteen and make a left, but once they're coming down Beaver Creek, you could turn left at Clermont, you could turn left at Loader, or.
So there's left turns.
Myers, and then Glen Oak, but as you get beyond Glen Oak, if you're farthest south, then you wouldn't have that opportunity anymore. So.
Can I ask one other question, because I'm a little confused?
Sure.
I I know who the, our first gentleman was, John, but are you representing the city or representing the planning of this area that I'm not sure?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not representing the city. We do Lancaster, I'm the owner of Lancaster Engineering, we do a lot of work on the applicant side.
The applicant side being the city right now, not the developers?
Well, for development work.
Okay, I was just confused where with this conversation.
The city hired him to do this study, we reviewed the study, John Riplinger reviewed the study.
Okay, I just didn't.
There's no develop, he's not. Just providing comment.
Input.
Transportation engineer.
I didn't know, so I thought I better ask, I thought maybe we were at the development stage already, thanks.
No, no.
No, there's no development.
Who's this question?
This is ahead of that, so, but what we're seeing kind of in anticipation of future development is this issue with the spacing of those collector streets, so that's why I wanted, as we move from concept plan to implementation, that's why I wanted to share this at this stage in the process, so we've been coordinating with city staff at the right time to share that.
Okay, thanks.
So anyway, move through this quickly, the, then that inability to left, to make that left turn movement further decreases those volumes on the southern streets in the plan area. So, so what we're seeing is, and also this sort of the the shape of the plan area, the north, it's wider. The collectors are are spaced farther apart, but as you move south, it sort of funnels in. That big notch to the east side of the plan area is kind of off the side of the canyon, it's open space planned for parks and it's not developable. So the the geography of the plan area kind of funnels down towards the south end, but the road system follows, which is logical, that's fine, makes sense. But as they kind of get closer together, that combined with a decrease in in residential density, a lot of those streets at the south end, we think, are not going to have that much traffic. They're going to be, to steal John's analogy, these are one-stamped streets, not two, so. That's what we wanted to raise that, I I don't have a specific proposal for you tonight other than to kind of raise that issue, talk about it a little bit, and maybe ask for, as the plan gets adopted, some flexibility in the way those streets can be constructed. Just kind of to Christina's point about speeds, we wouldn't want to over-design those streets because they're, they're all residential in character, especially at the south end. And we want them to be sized appropriately, so they're not too big, speeds aren't too high, make sure we can maintain neighborhood livability.
There was my question that, because I thought south end is the residential area, and I thought, so if somebody wants to go home and they're coming from Albertson's, they can't turn left into the residential, they'd have to turn in further out like an industrial or that way to go down, all the way down to the residence, and as they go all the way down someplace else, turn around, come back to turn in right into the residential area. You follow what I'm saying?
I think so, yeah.
And I was thinking, because if that's residential, how are some of those people who go shopping and all that going to get back to their homes? Except winding their way through some of those areas that are supposedly going to be some downtown areas with
Right.
with storefronts down below and residents up above, they're going to have to go through all that just to get back down to their homes on the south end?
Some of them would, and there's two kind of north-south collectors, so that could share the traffic load. And I think all that's appropriate, I'm not disagreeing with any of the, any of the findings of the concept plan or the network, we just think as you get farther south, I think some of those streets won't need to be collectors. They could be local streets and have enough capacity to serve that demand, so.
I understand.
We're just trying to kind of get ahead of that issue because I see it coming up as after the plan is implemented and development applications start coming in.
And I only ask it because I know residents will probably start complaining that, well, I have to go all the way on here or all the way around here to get in there because I can't turn left there to go into my street.
Definitely be the case, yeah. So, and I guess one last point, I think earlier iterations of the concept plan zoning configuration had R-two, the higher-density residential down to the southern boundary, and in response to some neighbor concerns, just outside the planned, plan area, that's now R-five or lower density and the R-two kind of moved north. So that, that kind of further decreases the land use intensity there at the very far south end, so I just wanted to raise that issue and and just kind of ask for some flexibility as the plan moves toward adoption. Happy to answer any other questions if there are any?
Any other questions, Mr. Mobley?
My only concern.
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have two more cards, if you'd both like to come up, Christine Kozinski and Elizabeth Grazer-Lindsay. And please do try to hold your comments to three minutes.
Oh, more reading.
Is this different than what we've already been given?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Kozinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. In March of this year, Oregon City along with all other cities in Clackamas County met to upgrade, to do the five-year upgrade in Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. After meeting with the county, Oregon City then began their five-grade, five-year upgrade for their addendum, which allowed them to receive FEMA funding for disaster. I am here tonight to tell you that the requirements of the Oregon City Addendum to the Clackamas County Hazard Mitigation Plan will not allow Oregon City to use or to have Holly Lane in its TSP because the city is to protect life and property, because the city must incorporate natural hazards into its comprehensive plan, and because the city states, it will implement and use the mitigation plan to help the city's comprehensive land use plan to meet state land use planning goal seven, which is designed to protect life and property from natural disasters and hazards through planning strategies that restrict development in areas of known hazards. The city must immediately withdraw Holly Lane, both the north and south extensions from its T S P. It must further remove the hazardous landslide areas of Thayer Road and from Maple Lane. The city must also change the trips counts coming out of the development located at the old bus barn so that they will not be automatically directed to use Holly Lane. There shall be no actions from the city that make or create Holly Lane as a thoroughfare. The FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan tells the city it must protect the people and property in hazardous areas as is directed in the terms of statewide land use planning goal seven. If the city does not take all of Holly Lane, as well as parts of Thayer and Maple Lane out of its T S P, then it risks losing its certification from FEMA. So I'm here to tell you that no, Oregon City will not come and take Holly Lane. It will not take the people's property. It will not send them to the poorhouse. Oregon City is to abide by all terms of the FEMA National or Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and all statewide land use planning goals, especially that of goal seven. The city must support the Oregon City Addendum to the Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Nat- Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan in its entirety. The Oregon City Plan is sixty pages long and is on your website. The Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Plan is a hundred and twenty pages long and is found on the internet. I've given you a copy of the requirements of goal seven. And I'm turning in some federal regulations which I didn't have time to copy off. I'll turn this into the city so that they can run it off for you, but this goes along with the hazard regulations. Thank you.
Just something new.
We add it to the record.
Just something new, Christina, that we haven't looked at before?
Um, it's not new. Oregon City was first first received its certification from FEMA in two thousand and nine. The update this year from Clackamas County was huge and went into areas that never, you know, were gone into in the past. It took Clackamas County a long, long time to do this. It all started at the state level. The state has to be certified in order to get FEMA funding in a disaster when the governor, you know, claims one. So it, these actually come from the federal government, down to the state government, down to the county and down to the city from there. So the, I know that Clackamas County worked on this for a long time because the changes were very wide ranging.
Well, what I was asking is, good information, does does this go back to FEMA to know that Oregon City is not abiding by this this kind of information that you're presenting us here, or is this something you're telling the city?
I suppose only if somebody lets them know that. You know, I I did call ODOT and I explained to ODOT that Holly Lane could not be used and.
Is it considered an evacuation route is what I was wondering?
Pardon me?
Is Holly Lane considered an evacuation route or just in a FEMA?
FEMA says that statewide goal seven rules. And it says that a local government must protect people and their property in hazardous areas. Holly Lane is a very hazardous area. And in the city's comprehensive plan, it's very clear that heavy traffic cuts into the road. And development widening the road could cause those landslides to reactivate. And the people have no landslide insurance, so who's going to pay for the casualty? I mean, the people are already going to lose a lot of money in their in their land. Their properties are going to go down probably by fifty percent if it gets hit with all this traffic. Nobody wants to buy a home with that kind of traffic coming within twelve inches of their living room window. They're just not, the people are going to take the loss on this. And FEMA says, no, you cannot do that. You must protect these people who are in a vulnerable hazardous area. It's not their fault that this happened, which is true. Ninety percent of the people on Holly Lane have no idea they're living in a landslide zone unless they get hit by one. And then they find out, ooh, gee, I'm responsible for all of these losses. I can't pay it. And so they go to bankruptcy, they get foreclosed. The people are the losers in all of this, and the government sought to protect the people.
What I was trying to ask was, is you're telling the city this and, but does anybody tell FEMA that the city's not in in line with what they're asking?
No, I'm just trying to tell you what's happened. I've been actually kind of watching this for the last few months. I knew it was coming. And so I read the Clackamas County one, and then I read the Oregon City one as it came out. And I realized that it does support the fact that Holly Lane is hazardous and should not be used for heavy transportation.
A lot of research, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey. I also live in unincorporated Clackamas County. Currently, there's a continuous stream of traffic on Beaver Creek Road at most of the day. And a lot of it's through traffic, whether it's coming from outside of Oregon City or it's coming, it's people in Oregon City that are traveling through Oregon City. And so when we are looking at having tens of thousands of new vehicle trips every day, it's only right to protect the capacity and the experience of these people of the road actually functioning for them and them able to get through here. The city's code shows that major arterials are supposed to be five lane. The only reason that there was any thought of it being three lane when the concept plan was being drawn up is that there was some discussion at that time of this development being quite green. That discussion's pretty much gone away, but the thought was that no one would be driving and everyone would be walking and bicycling so that you wouldn't need to be able to accommodate a lot of traffic. And for that reason, the three lane got in there. But when we see that these people will actually be driving, we don't want to have the road just really clogging up. So I believe that the city should be making sure its system development charges are high enough that they can pay for the cost of the road being at the level that it can actually function. And I also think that the roundabouts, they're well known to slow traffic down, which might be fine in some contexts. But when you have a a large amount of through traffic, it doesn't make sense to be slowing the traffic down. People are already pretty upset about how it slows down at the high school and want to get that fixed. So they really don't want to see more slowing down happening. As you heard tonight, there's some safety problems for pedestrians and cyclists with the roundabouts since they have to cross over the traffic. But there's also the disadvantage that pedestrians don't like to have to walk farther than they need to. But the roundabout makes their the distance they have to walk farther. Anyway, those are the comments I wanted to share with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Are there any other public comments? I have no other cards, but does anybody else wish to comment? Okay. Seeing none. Christina, back to you for discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to do one more slide just to give you some context.
Okay.
We have some future meetings coming up and and I will provide some staff responses to the comments I received this evening. So those will be incorporated at the next meeting that you can review, particularly related to collectors and geologic hazards on Holly Lane. I'll provide some response back on those two items. We are here at November twenty-fifth. December sixteenth is your Planning Commission meeting for the month of December. I think our goal on the December sixth meeting is to kind of go over kind of the items that haven't been resolved yet. Those include parks, acquisition numbers. I'm still working with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I hope to have more direction by December. I'll know more in a couple of weeks. There's some upland habitat comments related for the Natural Resource Committee that I want to share at that meeting, as well as finalize the Home Occupation Cottage Industry Code. At that meeting, if there is some clear direction to give to staff, that would be helpful on all the topics or most of the topics. Because in January, I hope to come back with the full package and findings and the full draft recommendations to allow the Planning Commission to put together and discuss and agree on the packet of recommendations to the City Commission. And these meeting dates are always subject to change, but that's kind of the targets I'm looking for for next steps.
Question?
Yeah.
Go on, sorry. Are we not seeing Gardner Middle School on December sixteen?
You have a quite busy schedule on December sixteenth. Christina, you'll be sitting, seeing Gardner Middle School and you'll also be seeing the continuance of the Milner Pet Hospital. So you'll have the three items on the sixteen.
That's not practical. That isn't going to happen. I mean, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I haven't been up here that long, but I mean, the narrative on the Gardner Middle School is a hundred and nine pages. We're being asked for quite a few variances in there. I haven't seen a staff report. That's not out yet, I understand, but.
What I would recommend doing, we've already noticed Gardner Middle School and the Milner Vet has always already been continued to the sixteen. So if you wanted to have just two items instead of the three, then I would recommend continuing this one, not to the sixteenth, but to January. So push this item.
That's, that's why I brought it up, because I think we're going to push it that night. And if we don't do it ahead of time, I think it's just going to happen.
I don't think anybody wants a recommendation to continue at nine forty-five at night, so I totally support.
Yeah.
Moving it to January thirteenth.
January.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So is that third image supposed to be industrial with a smokestack?
Sure.
I saw that and go, oh, look.
You know, you find the icons that kind of make sense. I don't, I don't draw the icons. So I'm going to go back to this page to kind of provide some direction for conversation. So I don't need any direction this evening, but if there is consensus on any of these three topics, it'd be nice for staff just because I can note it and for the for the matrix.
Would it be helpful to go back to those, the slide that has the four, I think there were four topics that you discussed with the City Commission?
Yeah. Is really, it's to, so we want to do topic one, Beaver Creek Road Design?
Where are you wanting her to go?
So there's actually two slides and these are the four questions.
Right there. Because you're looking, you're looking for some sort of consensus from us, whether we.
So basically, the three questions, one, do you concur with the City Commission's initial direction? And if not, what would the Planning Commission's recommended recommendation be? The second one, staff's related to the transportation analysis for the rezone. I don't have any requests for comment, but if you have any comment at that time. And the third one is the speed. So for the item number one, these are the four questions we ask the City Commission.
Thoughts or comments on that first one there? How many lanes?
Five.
Five.
Number, or?
Lanes. Three or five?
Three, three or five? Well. I think there's three in part of it and five in the other part. There's a transition somewhere.
That would be your recommendation?
Yep.
Okay.
The three further out, but when you get into all that, all that traffic in there.
Yeah, the dense area.
Where where the transition would take place.
Yeah.
They're, they're saying Meyer Road and, you know, it's, I don't have enough information to say that some other road is better, but I think it should be a transition.
I I agree with with five through the concept plan. My only, my only concern when I, when I see three lanes at Myers Road is exactly how and where you do that. Because by coincidence, at the other end of Myers Road, at two thirteen, southbound at night, that is a nightmare because you've got a signaled intersection and people also trying to reduce from, go from five to three.
There's a merge.
Now, we already proved that didn't work. I just don't want to see us design the same thing.
Drop right turn lane.
Again.
It is. Yeah, because that right lane, people try to get around everybody in the center lane and it's a mess.
Let me, my goal is to get all your comments.
Okay, so that, that's just what I'm concerned about. And what might be different, and this might be a question for Mr. Replinger or. It's, it's possible that there will be more right turn onto Myers Road from Beaver Creek than there is right turn onto the other part of Myers from two thirteen.
I think so.
Maybe, I don't know. And if there is a, I mean, if most of the traffic's going to be right turn and it really does drop, you know, there's a lot of dropout at Myers Road and Beaver, on Beaver Creek, then maybe that's a great place to have that transition. I'm just concerned that we're going to have the same issues again that we have over on Malala.
So for my notes, can you say that again, the what? The Malala?
The Malala Myers intersection.
Where they, presently, where they go from two.
Where the, where it drops from five lanes to.
Yeah.
Three, right at, essentially at, right after the stoplight, doesn't work. So how can we make this transition? Well, this is a lot. Not have the same issues as the ones that the one we already did.
You're done. When the lane numbers reduce, they need to, you're you're concerned that they get reduced in the appropriate place so it doesn't back up.
That's a mess up there.
Yes, and it, does it have to be some distance after Myers? Just like we're, just like the alternative mobility standard has that, is going to have that yield runoff lane. Maybe we need a longer yield runoff lane. That, that's my only concern. But basically, we agree with five lanes as much as we can afford, right?
Right. I want to add something to that.
The, the Myers Road, the link between Beaver Creek and two thirteen? Or is there a fear?
That's what they're building now.
Is your, is your concern that we could be creating a bottleneck on that road? Because it's, if you're, if you're feeding it with five lanes at, at Beaver Creek.
I'm not worried about Myers. I'm worried about people backing up on, on Beaver Creek the same way they back up on two thirteen.
Exactly.
Where it drops from five to three.
Well, but if we have a roundabout, I'm, I'm not. There's a roundabout there, but there shouldn't be a backup. It should be a pretty smooth.
But if you're narrowing the roads down, it's still going to be a backup. Because if you're sitting up there on two thirteen, people come on the right lane trying to get in there and it really upsets everybody who.
You could create a bottleneck someplace along on Myers Road if you've got major lanes going there and they can turn and and go to two thirteen. And there's, if there's issues getting on there, then there's a bottleneck.
There's no plans for residential off the Myers Road extension, is there? Isn't that kind of going around the college?
Yeah, that's all campus industrial.
So we probably wouldn't have a major problem there because of residential, probably more on the right off two thirteen than off right off Beaver.
Christina, can you bring that up?
You know what I mean? If they're not going to residence?
I'm sorry to ask.
But there's, it's industrial land. That's, that's where the Beaver Creek industrial lands are, on the other side of, than Myers Road Extension.
On the other side, okay, I'm thinking of going behind the college.
Myers Road is the, the one up by the college, right?
That is Myers.
Okay, the one going to the northeast, that is, this guy right here.
This is Clermont, Loader.
What is in here? The major intersection, we're proposing going to three lanes. Where are people going there? Is that where most of traffic is going or are most of people going to be going home down here? So how much traffic is going to continue through compared to how much is peeling off onto Myers?
So I can add that, and I, that sounds like one of those questions I can get back to you on, because I don't have that answer.
Because the problem with two thirteen and Myers is the bulk of traffic going home to Malala continues on. And that's the, that's the, that's the horrible part of that intersection where who's going down there? The people living in rural Beaver Creek, which isn't quite as bad as the, the number of people going to, you know, Malala and two thirteen. I know the intersection well, that's, that's where I turn.
So what I'm hearing, I can get some more information from.
They're still going, yeah.
Our Development Services and our Public Works Department and Dana Webb, our city engineer, about their thoughts on ensuring a good transition and what they're thinking about. I can respond back on that. The real, the discussion about the trip, uh, distribution of where the trips are going, I have to take a look and and I can include that in my responses staff.
Okay.
I have to take a look and, and I can include that in my responses to staff the next meeting.
Okay. We basically have agreement that we're, we agree with five lanes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a good transition.
A good transition.
Yep. Okay. All right. Traffic signals or roundabouts?
Signals.
What do we wanna recommend?
Signals for safety for pedestrians.
But the city commission already threw the roundabouts under the bus for Beaver Creek, so we should even...
We have an opportunity to put our oar in the water and let them know that we want, we prefer roundabouts if we do.
I'm about, I'm about signals, because of safety of pedestrians.
Do you wanna acknowledge that we didn't give you the same presentation that we gave the city commission?
Right.
And we did give them aerial images of what the difference is with a five-lane roundabout, which is extremely impactful to some of those neighboring properties. So I, I wanna acknowledge that this is an interesting, this is a iterative process, but we're trying to make sure that everyone's along in the same direction. So we do have the direction from the city commission, it's good to have your input too, but we didn't give you the full presentation that we gave them.
Though it is available.
So roundabout would take up some properties of people that lived there already, where you can't move the road over here to put the roundabout in, as what you said by the aerials.
I agree with you.
It's incredibly impactful.
Traffic signals make more sense.
Safety for people.
When you see the, when you see the cost difference to...
Because five lanes is huge. A five-lane roundabout is huge.
I've been alone in Portland, as I sit down there to all this...
Traffic signals.
Signals, okay.
I like that it's a mess.
Okay.
It's all your fault.
Basically, consensus on signals? Next.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Okay. Should the city renegotiate with ODOT to remove the Holly Lane connection from our TSP?
I...
I'm gonna say no.
I, I say, I say no. The, the Holly Lane thing is probably in a big delay, and if, if we change that now, we have to go back through on urban mobility on, on stuff, and it, it just creates a lot of extra hassle.
Yeah, I'll go along with that.
Go ahead.
I've been listening for seven years to Christine, I understand all this. If what I said is true about Frank, Commissioner Frank having said that we're taking it out of the picture for now, Holly Lane, then I would go ahead with no, because I know it would cost the city a lot more money. But as long as Frank and the other commissioners agree that we leave Holly Lane alone for a while because of all these safety concerns that Christina points out, Christine, excuse me, not Chris, you're Christina, then I would go along with no too.
Well, on the...
Until next year.
The last question is, is a little bit more directed for the city commission, just because it's related to capital improvement projects and looking at funding and would we need to bond or, you know, fiscal ways of looking at it. But, you know, as a planning commission, whatever the adopted design is, that's what development will need to build.
Time for capital improvement.
Right. Yeah, I, I think it's pretty safe that we're all gonna say we'd, we'd love to have the capital project if we can squeeze together two dimes to make it happen.
I just remember what they did on Sunnyside when they only did part of it, that Right. That everybody was cramped up, and then they decided to improve it, and then they, they did worse for people.
Okay. Okay. What else do you need from us?
Uh... Do you have any additional questions for staff as it relates to the transportation analysis that I can do homework on if you need? And then lastly, speed zones within the concept plans. Reducing residential streets to 20 miles per hour as part, as part of this adoption process. It may not be the formal ordinance, you may have to do subsequent ordinances when actually development happens, but it's the, like, parent ordinance that's the fourth.
Well, I said my piece on that one.
Yep, you said your, and I, and I agree with that. I think the trend is going from whatever speed you have to five miles slower. And this, this concept with Senate Bill 558, I think, simplifies that whole process. You don't have to do a lot of other studies to get your support from whoever has the final authority on it.
Thanks.
I'm waiting for him. No. I may be an older man, but I still believe in higher speeds, so I'm more of 25 to 30, but, and unless you're really into small residential where there's kids. But I keep thinking about, depends on where the road is leading. If it is all homes with families and kids, yeah, I can see 20, but still, I'm 25 too.
Well, we were not, we weren't talking about, you know, we were talking about collectors or which ones we were talking about?
That's what I was saying.
Oh, I think these are all residential, local streets.
They should be as low as possible.
Because I, I have a feeling some people won't be happy till it's 10, 15. People keep wanting to lower it, and lower it, and lower it.
That's what also could include residential collectors.
Neighborhoods, yeah.
See, residential collectors, I think, should be higher.
That's gonna get... It's kind of, it sounds like it's a, it's a split decision, but it's a little more, or pushing for 20.
Well, I can bring it back. We don't have our whole commission tonight.
It sounds like everybody here wants us to lower yours.
I'm kinda hearing it.
We can bring it back. We, we were missing two players today.
So what I can do is I can incorporate into the findings of them as the hearing moves forward, and we have the full commission, we can have kind of a further discussion, but I'll build it into the findings right now.
And, and that will, the tentative that we have made tonight will be what gets fed to the city commission at their next update.
Well, this'll be the tentative, is what you see in the draft recommendations, and then you have to determine what your final draft recommendation will be. So I'll just feed it into the initial draft.
On the right road, not in the neighborhood.
Okay.
All right, so I will see you in the new year.
I, I'm gonna, I have just one more...
You're taking off, going on vacation, or?
One more thing.
I'm not coming back in December.
We talked, I, I brought up at a, at a previous meeting, and I don't know when the right time is to bring this up, it may be, it may, this, this may be too premature, but the physical separation between sidewalks and especially bike lanes and the street section. And I, I think kind of what I'm talking about is a, is a different street section than we know, than what we normally build in, to be used in this concept plan area that provides some sort of a physical barrier between the traffic lane and the bike lane.
So you've got a grade separated bike lane?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know when is the right time to suggest that to the city commission. And I don't know if everybody else agrees with me.
Well, I love those.
What?
If you're gonna do that, give me a motorcycle lane too.
It goes along with safety, right? That's the primary reason probably for doing it.
Exactly.
Yeah, so...
And, and usage. The, the studies show that people, that when there's a physical separation, people are much more likely to bike than if all they've got is a paint stripe technique.
I don't mean to be facetious, but do people actually bike here in Oregon City that much? I mean, with all the hills and everything and the weather?
No, no, but hopefully, they might have the opportunity to do it within this concept plan. That's, I mean, that's the whole point of the concept plan, is there's employment opportunities, there's shopping opportunities, and there's living opportunities. And I think the, I think the marketing appeal, I think the whole appeal of that, this area is gonna be that I can do that if I want. I, and nobody's gonna drive, you know, over to Fred Meyer, I mean, ride their bike over to Fred Meyer, get their groceries and cross 213, no. But within the concept plan.
Within it, maybe, yeah.
Uh, I can do additional research and talk to our public works and provide more feedback on that option, and what they were already, what they have been thinking about and what they would need to do for next step on that.
A BSP bicycle.
While we're talking Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Implementation, Christina, did you want any other comments regarding any other topic that we didn't talk about tonight? I know Chair Mitchell had identified a concern for us to look, like, we were looking at commercial trucks, to also think about commercial trailers and how do they fit into the home occupation?
Yeah, I mean...
Is that something we should keep?
Well, I was gonna come back with home occupation, making sure that, in the revised version we review at the next Beaver Creek Road meeting, both understanding that a lot of people who utilize the home occupation cottage industry code may have larger industrial, uh, commercial trailers, not just trucks, so make sure we define that, as well as what Elizabeth brought up, uh, when I talked to her at the end of the meeting, which is, we talk a lot about, um, retail relates to service, conjunction of service, but we don't wanna forget that we want people to make things in the Beaver Creek Road cottage industry, and you should be able to sell what you make. So if you make a widget in your home occupation, you should be able to sell your widget on site. So that's one thing we're gonna take a look at, and how that might be incorporated into the draft home occupation code, because I would hate to be in a place where our whole goal of this concept plan is to allow people to have businesses and they can't sell what they make in this area. So I will be looking at those additional code amendments when we come back.
Anything else before we move on?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so the public record stays open on that item, and we will move on to item number four, a general business, which is the planning commission yearly update to the city commission, which will be on December 18th. You all got a copy of, a recap of our 2019 agenda items. So I'll hit the high spots on that, I did some highlighting on that. Also, hit the high spots and let them know what we've been working on in 2019. What I'd like to know from my fellow commissioners is what you would like to see me tell the city commission we plan to do in 2020, other than deal with the topics that are brought before us? Anything as far as goals?
Have we ever just said the goals was more of what we accomplished, or was it, we also said the goals when Denise and everyone would give that presentation? Were we saying the goals for the next year?
So there's a couple different things going on. Generally, if there were a thing, well, um, the planning commission did goals for a while, then they didn't do, do goals for a long while, and then they started doing goals again. We tentatively have scheduled in January to talk about if there are goals, if there's work sessions that you want us to schedule when you don't have hearings, or things that you're looking at doing. We'll wanna make sure that when we create this list, if we're looking at priorities or workload, that that fits with everything. And then also that our other goals implement the city commission goals as a whole as well. The up, yearly update to the city commission is just how we've, how we've been doing, all the great stuff that we've accomplished, if there's one thing that we're focused on doing. I think in 2020, it is the comprehensive plan. So you don't have enough information, because I haven't told you enough about it yet, because we just have been receiving grants and working out the scope of work, but you will know more in January, certainly.
So I would think that the most of what we've done is go through all those codes that went before the city, and now going through Beaver Creek for half a year, it seems.
Yeah, you guys have been incredibly busy with complicated hard projects.
I mean, there's been some small things, annexations, small things, but mainly, it's a lot of listening to all these, the plan code changes, as well as the Beaver Creek concept plan stuff.
I would say last year was one of the hardest years to probably be a planning commissioner, because there was so much stuff that was happening. And this year is not as bad as last year, but is way harder than a lot of previous years, because again, there are these legislative files and some technical things too, and yes, there's a lot of discretion in how, in the items that you've been reviewing.
Did we set goals for next year, other than listening more? Signaling the Beaver Creek?
That's, that's what I'm asking. Do, do we have goals other than?
To get through the year? Listen to Christina.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll bring something up, and maybe this'll start the process. Parking minimums and maximums.
Oh, yeah.
Should we have a work session and look at that? Are they right? Should we have them? And, and the reason I bring that up is, I can recall at least three instances in the last 10 and a half months where we were asked to go outside our parking maximums. That kind of tells me that maybe they're not right.
I can tell you, though, I have zero staff capacity for that, particularly this year, when we're doing the comprehensive plan update.
So, so the comprehensive plan is, update is going to be able, you have the funding to, to do it?
Yes, we got one, yes, yes, yes. And it is going to be all hands on deck, and we'll expect a lot of you guys and of staff and out there founding pavement to get public input on our, we'll start with the community vision, and then we'll take that vision, and that will be the driving force for the implementation of the comp.
Okay, well, with that information, then I won't, we've been trying to bring anything else.
So, but, but if you guys wanna have a work session to know more about some, something like, this past year, we did landslides and natural resource, I mean, if there's some topic that we want to know more about transportation, you know, we'll do our land use 101 at the beginning of every year like we do, but if there's, if you wanna have a joint work session with another committee or something like that, please let us know. I would just say, rest up while you can in the rest of 2019, because 2020 is gonna be a doozy.
Beaver Creek is almost done, the concept plan, right? We're, your, your plan is to have us in the, in January.
I mean, for you, yes.
Right, for us guys.
Taken to the city commission and adopted later in the spring.
Right, so beyond the Beaver Creek concept plan, then we have the comprehensive plan.
The comp plan's gonna take a lot of time.
Plus a few annexations here and there, but from what I gathered from the other night, the city is considering where they want to go forward with annexations until things are decided. Did I hear that?
The city commission would like to create a policy that we'll come back and talk more about.
So I said, so it's still in consideration?
That's for non-emergency annexations, so non-sewer or septic related annexations. But again, we have zero control about what applications come and when, and so...
Um, okay, so obviously, comprehensive plan is big, number one. I'm looking at this last, the last goals from the previous planning commission, and there is one thing on here that, that I'll mention, which is continuing work sessions with other boards and committees, like a, I don't know, once a year thing. Transportation advisor committee, natural resources. I think that it's important to continue those, so I'll mention that we wanna continue those. And then the other thing would be, and Laura mentioned it, education. Is, is there a topic where we feel we need additional training or education, or topic or topics? You found yourself in a spot where, I don't know, I don't, I don't have info here, so...
Yeah, it, yeah, I've found the spots, like, but can I put a finger on it of which spots are gonna cause us a problem in the next year if we don't get brushed up on it?
Right.
Uh, it, it's a, it's a good, good idea to, I don't know, if we can just budget some time on it and says, we're gonna have an education and we'll figure out what, what topics we may be interested at that time. We, if, to identify it tonight, I think, I haven't been doing much homework for the last three weeks.
That the city decided?
And probably won't for December, but I do read the staff reports on that, but I just haven't taken the, had the time to spend on that, so...
The training topic that was on the last commission's goals, what goal was stormwater standard, learn more about stormwater standards.
We got a, we got a pitch from, from somebody, and that was good. That was good.
Yeah, so is there anything else like that that you want on another topic?
There was also effective communications. If we ever really resolved that.
Well, we could try parks and rec. You're, you're familiar with that one probably better than any of us. Are there things, parks maintenance and, and all of that, that...
Well, but that gets into our world much.
Did the city ever decide on lot averaging?
Well, they did.
A lot, yeah.
The, um, sorry, the, for lot averaging, they implemented this planning commission's recommendation, I believe. I can't remember what your, what your recommendation was, but it was, instead of 20 percent, instead of 20 percent reduction, you can only get a 10 percent reduction instead of an average. Um, and you can have basically unlimited number of lots below. They were limited to 25 percent of the land division.
I think that was the previous planning commission, because it went to the city after us from the year before.
I know, I kind of forget what you did.
It's so long.
With this group of committees.
Now, what, what's in the new code? Is it 10 percent reduction allowable on 25 percent of the lots?
Right. Right.
But then with master plans and all that, you have more courage to-
That one's done.
Yeah, but then it goes back to you in a hearing.
So it, it may not-
Identify, on this, from the previous commission's goal, identify effective communication strategy to the city commission.
Yeah, that's-
A dedicated work session for contribution to the twenty nineteen, twenty-one city commission budget and goals. So we're just at the beginning of-
Next, I would say at the end, this time next year, we absolutely should be talking about. So I guess it would, I would highly recommend that at this time next year, you start to identify things that you want to go into the next biennium. So it's this fall, winter, that you start identifying topics that should be next on if you want to change-
For the next biennium.
Or whatever the thing is. And then we can get it funded in the next round.
Does the city have a retreat every year or is that every two years?
Uh, generally, you have a retreat every year. It's just when-
So I know Mike and I attended that last year to give some advice and, and listen. I think good communications between the, the city community, um, and us was important to be there, don't you think?
Yeah, I, I'll mention, I can put that in the report.
And we'll, we'll do a goals progress update on how we're advancing on city commission goals.
So I'm not hearing a consensus on a training topic.
Well, you want to bring someone in to train us?
What I want, I'm, I'm the eighteenth. I'm going to go to the city commission with our annual report. I'm going to talk about what we did last year. And then I talk about, here's what we're going to do next year. Huge number one capital letters is comprehensive plan, okay? One of the things that was on the previous planning commission's goal was a training topic that they wanted to learn more about. Is there a training topic that we want to learn more about next year?
I would say-
That I should tell them, we're going to have a training, we're going to learn more about this.
Is there more training you can do about the comprehensive plan to, so we understand it better? And what we, we really need to do for it? Is there somehow we could learn more about what the need is in that comprehensive plan?
About-
Or is that just step by step?
Yeah, no, no, uh, certainly. Um, we want to make sure that you understand what a comp plan is, why we're doing it, and how we're proceeding with it before we move forward with that.
Because we have a lot of new people on this, on this commission that need to understand that.
Mike, does it mention what kind of training? It's just a slide?
I appreciate that because of-
Mike, I want you to tell me what kind of training we want.
Well, each of us probably needs a different type of training. Some people need more, more in code. Some people need more training in-
More training, but we don't know what it is.
People can email me or, or Chair Mitchell as ideas come up throughout the year also.
I mean, as a commission, what are we lacking on?
I, I won't, I won't touch on that.
So again, I want to go back on that. On the comprehensive planning, who would do that? Would that come from someone like you or the city commission kind of give us ideas of what they want in a comp plan? Where does that, um, the ideas for the comp plan come from? Just by us sitting up here discussing and all of a sudden, oh, that's good? Or do you have a roadmap?
Um, I have a scope of work and how we will get to a comprehensive plan. Um, we'll do a work session on what that whole process looks like and what a comp plan is and all that before you dive into the details. But essentially, um, our project is going to start, it's going to include two, two main phases. Phase one is a community vision. So what should Oregon City be like in the next twenty years? What are things that, uh, we value? How do you take competing goals and, um, balance them? What are, what things can we do to better support all of our citizens? The answers to that, we'll, we'll, I'm sure you'll have ideas, but they're not going to come from you. They're going to come from the community. The whole point of this comp plan is that we're really going out to the community in a much different way than we ever have before. We're making very strategic efforts to make sure that we're engaging people who don't normally come to these meetings or watch them on cable TV. Our goal is to go out to as many or all the community members if we can. And so to do that, you'll do lots of different things to get feedback. We'll get all this feedback.
Who guides that?
Huh?
Who guides that, reaching out to the community?
Uh, we, we do.
You, the planning department? Because I don't see much coming from the communications director for out there to the community in the newspaper or otherwise.
Okay. Um, this is a group effort though, right?
Yeah.
So we will produce tools in which you are going to be expected to go out to community members and even train other community members to go out to other community members to get tools.
Neighborhood association meetings and talk it up.
Oh, yeah. And we go-
Things like that.
Right. So this is going to be a group, group effort. It will not just be us knocking, us, I mean, the planning department is four people and then me. And so like, we want more than that.
That sounds like a training itself of, of how to go out and get that information that we need. And that's going to take some good training to do.
Right. There, and, and there is training sessions in the scope of work. So you guys will be expected to attend a training session to learn how to utilize tools that are created for us from consultants that we don't even have yet. So, um, the point of this is that we will empower you to solicit feedback for how Oregon City will grow for, from as many people as you can. And we will give you many different tools to do that. And that you will go out there and do solicit feedback. And then hopefully you'll find someone who's interested and they will go and pass some flyers or surveys or whatever the thing is to their neighbors. We'll have, um, ideally chalkboards or some other things downtown so people can just answer random questions as they walk by. We will have surveys all over.